I will call to order the special meeting for Dunsmere City Council at 6:00 PM on January 30, 2020. You will begin with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with every feet and justice for all.
And whenever you're ready, please move into the room.
Councilor Deutsch.
I'm here.
Councilor Bryan.
I'm here.
Councilor Kaisler.
Here.
Councilor Morris.
Here.
Chairman President, thank you. All right, we will move into item number three of our agenda, which is our general public comment section. This time is set aside for individuals to address the city council on matters that are on the consent agenda, which tonight is our check register, our cost grant growth allocation, and allowing sale of an alley dividing two jointly owned properties. Or an item that is not on the agenda, that is within the city's purview. We will give each speaker about three minutes to speak. And does anyone have a general public comment?
(laughing).
May, but I must hold them back for now.
Okay. Seeing none, if someone can.
Is there somebody out there?
Okay.
No.
Hello. We're in the general public comment section, so if you have a comment of something that is not on the agenda.
Did you want to speak in front of council?
Sorry to put you on the spot, as we go to the room. We just have nobody else, so. Are you good?
Is he on the comment?
Uh, no. Okay. Okay. So you have three minutes, and whenever you're ready, and we request that you just state your name to the record.
My name is Noam Davis.
Noah?
Noam.
No.
Yes.
Okay, No.
And... I know you and a group of us have the same hopes, and that is to get a person out of the community who is detrimental to it. And we have formed basically a force to be reckoned with. And we just won yesterday in court. The first round. And Monday we'll initiate the second round and see what happens with that. And we have information that may help you, and we would like to offer that at any time is convenient for you, to assist you in your endeavors as well. And the person in particular is Mark Juarez. And that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a general public comment on items on our consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Okay. And just your name to the record.
My name is Shereen Strauss, and as everybody knows, I've been covering these meetings, but now I am going to be the Dunsmere reporter. So I want to give my information to everybody, because you guys need to be in the news more than you have been, and I'm gung ho. So I want to give out my number and my email, and I want to be notified when you know something's coming up that might be of interest. And I don't care how little it is. I told the schools and they're hitting me already, so that's great. My number is, to reach means to cell, is area code 530-859-3059. And my email address is, oh, one word, whatsupshereen@gmail.com. And I'll spell it for you. It's W-H-A-T-S-U-P-S-H-A-R-E-E-N at gmail.com. And I'm really looking forward to covering Dunsmere fully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me reread. That was 530-859-3059.
Correct. Yep.
So we just push forward.
All right. Do we have any other general public comment on items not on the agenda?
Hello. My name's Tina, and I too am a Dunsmere reporter. And I just started with my first one last month. And I'll be turning in another set for this, for February. Just interview date. And if you need to get ahold of me, I would love to be able to interview all of you. And it's just my name, tinafava@gmail.com.
How do you spell your last name?
F-A-V-A. But my stage name is going to be Tina Terramina. That's what you'll see on the screen. It rhymes.
And what is your phone number?
Oh, well, it's 310.
This will be on the air, just FYI, so.
Oh, yeah, FYI. I'll give it to you later.
Okay.
It's all good.
Good.
Do you have a question?
Just for clarification, are both of you reporting for the Siskiyou County Newspaper chain? Nope? That one of you?
So.
I am with the newspaper, and she's with Siskiyou Media Council. She's doing TV.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yay. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to get a general public comment on an item not on the agenda or on our consent? Seeing none, we will pull this item and recreate our general public comment. And we do not have an item for staff member comments tonight, so I will now take a place for staff and member comments quickly before we go to consent. So are there any staff comments for tonight? I'll start with you.
Yeah, the only staff member comment I had is we would like to welcome our newest community service liaison. He was hired. His name's Mark Allen. He's a wonderful guy. He is sitting in the audience today.
Who would be the best picture?
This is our code enforcement guy?
This is our code enforcement guy.
Really?
No, no.
Codeenforcement.catcher. Community Service Liaison is his official title. Started on the 27th on Monday. He's already been studying. He's got every single ordinance memorized.
That's perfect. Where are you going? Making the picture? Great. Don't put you on the spot. Now you're blocking him. She was like, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
You're in it too, Bruce.
Yeah.
You're all in it. Blake, move in. There you go.
Yeah, Mark, I didn't get the last name.
Okay, one more for fun. Thank you. Everyone look this way. Great.
Yay.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
If I could. I've explained to him he's going to be a bureau of the city. He's already getting that word.
Yeah, so thank you, Mike, for joining the team, and thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Any other comments from staff?
That is all.
Wonderful. All right, we'll move into council comments. Again, we don't have an item on this tonight, so if we can make them fairly quick. I know we haven't met yet this year. But Councilor Deutsch, do you have any comments for tonight?
I just would like to point out that I have just taken on the presidency of the CLOS Foundation Board Director. I'm looking forward to that, because the goal we've set for ourselves is to develop a real vibrant alumni community here in the county and across the country, so we'll be working on that. And then one other thing, sort of a committee report. I was at the local transportation commission meeting the other night, and I was offered the chair of that, and I decided I didn't have the energy on top of the other, but it was nice. And Joan Freeman Smith ended up taking it instead. Just thought I'd pass that on.
Thank you, Councilor Deutsch, and congratulations.
Thanks.
Councilor Bryan?
The Finance Committee met on the 28th of this month, and did a mid-year budget review. According to our best calculations, this is just for the general fund, we're still on track, even with the good news tonight from the cost grant. With everything up and down, we're still on track to approximately $90,000 in deficit this fiscal year. We haven't processed the enterprise funds yet, but we'll be back next week with that.
Thank you. Councilor Kaisler?
Well, the first thing I want to say is I am proud to be a rotary. And the Dunsmere Rotary Club, which I unfortunately invite you guys to come interview to sometime, we have our outgoing president is Wendy Marshall, and our incoming president is Cindy Forner. And I would like to personally thank Wendy for a great job. We've done a few projects together, and my honor that I look forward to working with Cindy. Her smile is infectious, so it's going to be great. Recently, I turned 60.
Woo.
I know I don't look 60, but I have one thing that I would really like to publicly thank everybody that came, that got involved, and publicly thank Bruce for putting on, you don't have to put on a show, so thank you. And everybody pretty much knows my name on Siskiyou Avenue. So I have a new German Shepherd puppy. So if you happen to see that little dog out on the street, please stop, yell, or sit on your back of the yard. She's wild. I have a handful. So that's a new thing in our life, is our puppies.
Aww.
Yay. Councilor Hart, please.
Well, attend me to the big party.
No.
If I said anything offensive, I would apologize. Those are wonderful.
We're going to take a break for two seconds.
Two seconds? I don't understand.
Sorry. Apparently, it breaks the whole audio here.
Okay.
All good?
No good.
Go for it.
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And the only other item besides attending the Finance Committee meeting, and I would emphasize, as much as we are monitoring the current fiscal year budget, so also are we trying to be faithful to, I think the common vision the council and the city treasurer has, that we start a forward-looking budgeting process. So we are starting all our visioning process that's on the agenda tonight, to have a budgeting process that aligns with the visioning process, including community grants. And I'm very, very happy with the work of this committee and its two public members. I share, one of the concerns for the city of Dunsmere is our inability to hire a wastewater three operator. And I've been designated until I'm undesigned to be the council lead on water issues, so there is going to be a meeting of the Integrated Regional Water Management Group, all of the cities in at least Southern Siskiyou County, in the basin, that we all pursue state funds jointly to deal with our water sewer issues. And there is a proposal from a gentleman named Paul Rose. He's from Truckee. He's an expert, and is certified as a Level Five wastewater operator. And he is suggesting, based on a study proposed to the IRWM, when we explore regionalizing our water testing, both ethylene and domestic drinking, or making the obvious point that in small communities, it's not cost-effective for each community to do it on its own. So I transmitted the study to the mayor and the city manager. Our next meeting is in the cloud on February 22. And I hope we could really make progress on assuring the citizens that we're needed to leading Sacramento River more vending water supplies that could not be had in the future.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Hart. All right, I'll be quick. I have two updates. So for Moss Creek Trail, I have been in contact with UPE, and they are promising in the next couple of weeks to do a onsite stakeholder meeting up here in Dunsmere. I will keep the council abreast as to when that meeting is.
Please.
I'm also working with John Harsh, who's the president of the Trails Association, about having them there as well. And then I also have a meeting lined up with them, hopefully in March, when I have to go down to Sacramento for work, to stop in at their office, and also, you know, checking on the, the plan is to check in with them as much as possible until we get actual movement and acceptance on their side of it. So we at least have been in contact.
When you say check in, you mean, buddy?
Yeah, basically, I was super.
There you go. I don't know where you say, man.
I'm very sensitive about this to me. So.
And the stakeholder meeting will be a public meeting?
I'm not sure what the format of that meeting is at this point. My understanding from it is members from organizations who have stake in the trail itself. So it would be the city, Trails Association, UPE, possibly county as well, most likely county. I don't know the full extent of that. I know that the Trails Association has done a number of public outreach for the trail already, but I want to get those assurances that we're going to have that before we start talking about more details and getting more of the general members of the public here. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
A report from public work with the city manager, I still don't know what's going on with the meeting of citizens and the booms in the river, and the seattle wells, and complaints from constituents. There's no fish, and I'm afraid to eat the fish. So this shouldn't be just about the Moss Creek Trail, in my opinion. And it should be open to the public.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
One of the things that comes up periodically, this is a good time to put a quote in here, and that is that if we do all of a sudden get either the trail down to the river, or help us all the way down to the falls, we're going to still have that parking problem. So I'm hoping that that's some way to find its way into our system to start finding a solution, because it's going to take a while.
Yeah.
So we're going to need to do some kind of study.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we've anticipated a couple of things, but I think the hardest part is getting UPE to say yes.
Certainly.
So, so yes, thank you for the suggestions. The second thing is, I have been working with Ed from GSJ, who came up here to discuss affordable housing a couple of months ago. He and I have met periodically, and I'm preparing a report for him to take to the governor's task force on affordable housing. So hopefully rural California can at least have somewhat of a say in how legislation and how tax allocation is done for that program. So I've been working on the backend with him, had a really nice two-hour meeting with him Wednesday talking about that. So hopefully moving forward with some funding to come up this year.
Are you, are you including Ed Gonzalez in these conversations?
He has that with us separately.
Could you meet with him, with you?
We can do that in the video.
So you kind of make sure there's not two sides of the coin, because that's what I think Ed is feeling.
Okay.
I mean, put that over here.
Sure.
You know, I talk to that one Ed, like the other Ed, but I think we would talk with him.
Okay.
There's something missing. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I will leave that.
I started from the arm, she's coming up in.
Sure. So we're on a staff member comment, so I don't know if the Sheriff's Office would like to make a comment during this time about what's up, or any updates.
And you have chairs up here, actually. Would you like to join us?
Actually, this is your chair, Sergeant Harms, and introduce your new partner, Ed. New chair.
Not walking into things, I'm nervous.
Aww.
You did her before, come on. Welcome back.
Yay.
Thank you. So I'm Deputy Ortiz of Siskiyou County Sheriff's Office. I was, I was told at 5:00 that I was going to come hang out at the city council meetings. I don't have much to say. We've got a new deputy, Deputy Devin Pauls.
Yay.
Field training process, one more phase to go, so she should be hitting the streets in maybe about a month. I'm guessing she'll be assigned to the South County and Dunsmere, so you'll probably be getting to see quite a bit of her. You want to throw the ground a little about you? I bet you're proud of me right now.
Oh, you know, always. I graduated from the CLOS Academy in August, and then the Sheriff's Office took me on in October. Prior to that, I got a couple degrees at CLOS. I've been in EMT for almost 10 years now. Prior to that, I was in the Navy. I did security forces and air carriers. So I have the taxable boat coxswain, so if you need help with boats, I might be able to help you, so.
Wow.
Where'd you grow up?
I grew up in a bad county.
How do you spell your name?
P-A-U-L-U-S.
How do you say it?
Have you been to one of these?
Hollis?
Hollis.
Yeah.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Devin, do you give your hand?
Well, welcome. Thank you guys so much, and thanks for getting prompt to.
I don't have stats or anything like that.
That's okay.
I realize that typically takes place.
This is bad.
We forgive you.
Oh, really? Okay, because I was going to talk to Jen. I was like, really, Jen? But I hate being unprepared, but.
Oh, you're okay.
And.
You're fine.
It seems like your heart's been down. It's a hard to buy though these days, so.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
That's good to hear.
That's a good thing.
Thank you so much for taking the time, and thank you for introducing yourself, and we're happy you're here.
Yay.
So what's your first name?
Mitch.
Well, thank you.
Cool. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, item number four. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have three items. Item A is check register December 15 through January 24, 2020. Item B is cost grant growth allocation. And item C is allowed sale of an alley dividing two jointly owned properties, 6254 shear and 6258 shear.
And Mayor, might we take item C off the consent agenda?
Yes, we may, and we will add that as item 6B. All right, is there any other discussion on the consent agenda, items A and B?
If not, I make the motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Sorry. There's a motion, a second, and a discussion on the motion at hand. Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All is in favor of approving consent agenda, items A and B. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. We will move on to item number five, old business, no old business. We'll move into item number six, new business. First one is item A, discussion and possible action regarding airport hanger lease rent increase. Boy, you have industry. The staff report, or do you want to say that?
You got it. You got it.
Cool. So just to let everyone know, tonight, our city manager is not with us due to a family event that is going on in Canada with his wife. So we will, we rolled through the staff reports, and there is available copies up at the podium. So tonight's staff has contacted by a resident who owns, oh, sorry, this consent agenda. All right. So the city staff is asking to raise airport hanger rates from 12 cents a square foot to 20 cents a square foot. The background obvious is that the currently city-owned hangers are rented at 12 cents per square foot. In contrast, other area airports are charging up to 28 cents per square foot. By increasing rents at least to 20 cents per square foot, would net an additional $5,000 annually once all rents have been raised. There are eight city-owned hangers that have current leases. Two of the hangers A and B have long-term leases. The long-term lease for hanger A will expire in approximately three years, and the lease for hanger B was just renewed. The remaining six hangers have leases that will expire at the end of June this year. Increasing rents to more than 20 cents a square foot is not recommended, as the runway facilities aren't in great shape. Thus, rents are not likely to command market rate. Options are to approve, increase, or reject the increase in hanger lease rates. Are there any clarifying questions? Councilmember Kaisler?
Yeah, on the long term, you mentioned that A is, it's three years, and B has just renewed. How long is, how many years does that renew for?
One. Thank you. One year.
But the problem is, you can't raise rates more than a certain percentage over a five-year period of time. So once they're locked in, that means we have to wait on those. So we're looking at just the ones right now that are able to be rolled over, because they're at a point where they can't.
Huh? What?
So we're only allowed to raise hanger leases that are coming up, so coming due this June. So we would raise those ones theoretically if we pass this. The other two, because of their long-term nature, we would have to wait until those are done. And since one gets just renewed, my understanding of what Councilmember Deutsch is trying to explain is legally with FAA standards and, and, yeah, I don't know if there's anything wrong with all this. Do you want to?
I think it would be good if we heard the rates.
Yeah. One gets in charge.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Or you can just watch and you all hold around.
So there are, there are hangers that are city-owned, and those hangers are noted by letters. And there are hangers that are owned by the pilots, and they have ground leases. And so those are two separate rates. And hangers that are owned by the city are year-to-year leases, just like you would rent a house or an apartment.
Okay.
And so anytime your lease is up on those, you know, you can increase the rate. For the ground leases, you can't, those are written in such a way that you can't raise the rent on those but every five years, and it can't increase by greater than 10%.
That's what I was trying to explain, that part.
Who wrote that?
That's just on the ground leases.
Who wrote that?
Council?
Is that a rural sentence?
There's an ordinance. It's 2016, and I don't know the last two numbers. But it was maybe 2016. It's Schedule A, and you can find that on the Muni code.
And that's for the long term, so that's what I was pointing out, that five years is going to be something.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Your name's on it. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Would anyone like to do, have a public comment on this item? You'll have three minutes, and we can come up to the podium, state your name. Seeing no public comment, I will move into discussion for council. Is there any discussion?
I know we do it.
So there's a motion. So do you want the recommendation?
Yes, recommendation.
So it's a motion to raise airport hanger rates from 12 cents per square foot to 20 cents per square foot. Is there a second?
I have a quick question. I mean, as a policy, like from council, only writing them out on a yearly basis. I know the city's been trapped into long-term leases and unfavorable rates before.
Yeah, it's kind of a row.
So I just want some clarification on, here, we have the option to raise rates further if that's where. Well, again, we're talking right now about the city-owned ones, and those, I'm going to raise each year, is what I'm saying, though.
Okay.
So what I'll do is make a note for a future agenda item to discuss longevity of the contracts and what our options are. So would that be sufficient for today?
Yes, that's cool. If that's the case, then I'll second Bruce's motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand, Councilmember Hart?
Well, I labor on with the Vice Mayor on the Finance Committee, and I give credit to the Finance Committee for a number of the goals and objectives for the current fiscal year 2019-20. They're all in the budget that we voted for slightly late this year. But item eight, in adopting this budget, the city council also included the following goals and objectives for 2019-20. Number eight, develop operational plan that reasonably predicts solvency for the airport fund. Item nine, spend absolute minimum amount on airport grants until operational plan is adopted. So my overall comment, as a real estate guy in Southern Siskiyou, is the airport is a badly managed asset. And until we come up with a plan to manage it better as an enterprise fund to contribute revenues to the general fund, I'm happy to vote yes to increase hanger fees for a facility where the runways and facilities aren't in great shape. Thus, rents are not likely to command market rate. This sort of stuff. When are we going to get the plan?
What does this have to do with raising the rates?
That, that it really, to me, is up for grants with the future of that facility and the airport.
So, so again, we're.
I'd like to see profitability, Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Hart.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments on the motion to raise the rate from 12 cents per square foot to 20 cents per square foot? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All is in favor of raising.
Vote aye.
Vote aye. Thank you.
Vote aye.
All right. The motion at hand is to raise the airport hanger from 12 cents per square foot to 20 cents per square foot. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
And myself is an aye. Vote aye carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number 6B, review city visioning survey and the distributive with the March 2020 utility billing. So this item was on our previous agenda. One of the things to note is that our timelines have been basically pushed back a month, which I was hoping not to run into in the world, because I know typically in April, we're discussing. which I was hoping not to run into in role because I know typically in April, we're discussing the budget a little bit more thoroughly for the next fiscal year, but that's just how, the way that works. So, on page 12 of your agenda packets, I just basically outlined a general visioning priorities timeline, discussing the first stage of public engagement, which will include a survey that will be sent through the utility billing process. It will be posted on the city website and it will be promoted through city social media and available in a hard copy at City Hall in the Public Library. Survey questions are at the bottom of page 12 and you'll see the header for that. The idea is to keep this as simple as possible. The more questions you add and the longer it takes people to take this survey, the less likely they are to do that. So, I tried to narrow it down to some of the most basic questions with the purpose of being able to get information from the general public to draft a vision statement, a new vision statement, and draft a list of priorities that people will list. So, one of the things we can discuss today, once we've heard public comment, is if we want to add anything to the top priorities question at the bottom. That was the one where I just kind of took my notes from what we've previously discussed and added that list. The second stage is taking the results of that survey, drafting a vision statement from common words, thematic, thematic items that keep come out of that, and take the draft vision to a public focus group that will be open to the public. And then, we will have them evaluate that draft vision and initial list of priorities. The results of the survey will then be synthesized with the discussion at that focus group. And then, we will have a draft vision that will go to the Planning Commission and City Council for final comments. So, even once that draft vision gets to Planning Commission and City Council, there's another opportunity at both those meetings for members of the general public to comment on it. So, in total, we'll have at least three public meetings where people can comment on the draft vision before the City Council would approve it at minimum. If it sits, obviously, at City Council for multiple meetings, they'll have more opportunity. And then, again, for the survey, it will be open to anyone who would like to take it. So, the survey, the really nice thing about that, it's going to be everyone who gets a utility bill. So, it will reach outside of the city limits for a couple of those properties. So, we will get some of the sphere of influence individuals participating in this, which we don't, I don't think we would want to discourage. But again, you know, we're open to discussion on the survey questions and how we do the process. So, this is just a real basic, put it together, get it out there. I was really trying to push for something that's as comprehensive as I can get it without, you know, while trying to get the most amount of people taking it. So, again, we could have made this a 50-page survey if you really wanted to delve down, but this, these questions are going to be able to give us a good list. So, do you guys have any questions before I roll into public comment?
I have. Have you thought about the public awareness campaign you want to lead off with? Because I would imagine that you'd want to have the newspaper, TV, and everybody else letting people know that when the bill comes in the mail, Wednesday or wherever you think it will arrive, check if there's something special to look at there.
Yeah, once we confirm this and the survey questions, I can get everything rolling. I can do online surveys as well, but it's going to cost some money to do that. So, I was trying to just stay with hard copies that we could print and then I can synthesize that through Excel. But yes, I was going to prepare press releases after this meeting and make sure everything's ready to go and try and hit every different type of media outlet that we can.
Thank you, Ramon.
So. Any other question, Councilmember R?
Well, is what we have, is a work product of you or the city manager or staff or?
I put this together.
And the way we did our disaster preparedness, now we'll push it back a little. Would you be willing to sit down for an hour to go over it?
If you want, the big thing I was hoping to get is a confirmation of the questions tonight. If you want to add things or you want to adjust the process, that, I can do that after we discuss that tonight. But I really need the questions set in stone tonight so we can get rolling on, you know, having everything drafted for the utility billing and it takes a bit of time to get all of that formatting ready to go, so.
And I appreciate that and I'm very pleased that this initiative is going on. For instance, survey questions, bullet three, what aspects of the city of Dunsmere should change? Is that talking about city government, is that talking about our community?
Anything.
And I think that's almost so vague that we need valuable responsive information from citizens. And sitting in the Finance Committee, if this serves a purpose besides a dialogue with the community, I hope the City Council is united in the notion of raising at least our sales tax this November, that there will be a ballot measure and we need to convince the voters why it makes sense to raise our sales tax. What services do you want to fund? What services do you not want to fund? So, I don't want to make it 50 pages long, but I do want to really understand from the different economic strata in our community, what you're willing to sign up for.
So, what I would, I would recommend from that is I would actually, I can actually program that into our second stage when we get the public focus groups. So, we can easily, you know, after, after today, if you have other questions or interest areas that you want to ask about, like the, you know, how likely would you be to vote on a task that funds X, Y, Z? We can do that at the public focus groups and still get that input.
So, it's a multi-phase, is what you're saying?
Yes, we can do that. So, if there's additional questions, I think the biggest thing is I kept the questions broad at this point because we're asking people not only to have a priority list, but also to develop a vision statement. And the more broad that you can make these questions, the more opportunity you are to find what's in crazy, what's thought about as far as how people want to see the mission go forward. Where if we subdivided into what aspects of Dunsmere city government should change, you know, you have to think about a typical individual and I don't think a lot of people have an opinion on that or, you know, that that might not be worth including in the vision statement. So, keeping it broad gives us a better ability to get a broad amount of input. And then, once we get to the focus group, then that's when we're starting to ask more pointed questions about, do you feel this vision statement encapsulates what, you know, Dunsmere is? And then, we can do the additional questions about, these are the top three priorities that have been identified by residents in this survey. You know, would you be willing to, would you vote yes on a task to fund these top three things? And so, we can start doing that, you know, as we get more and more specified through the process. So, it's kind of like an upside down pyramid, you start really, really big and broad and then you want to distill things down from there and give everybody an opportunity to give us, you know, pretty much the kitchen sink of what they would like.
Is that discussion now?
No, it was supposed to be just questions.
Yeah, this is very informative and the mayor is assuring me it's going to be an iterative process. And we're all going to try to engage with a goal that every member of our community is interested enough to give us their feedback, whether they're a business owner or a resident. And this is something I've been pushing for for 10 years, so I surrender to the planners.
Is there any other clarifying questions before I open this up for public comment? All right, is there any public comment on the community 2020 vision process and priorities?
I actually just want to know where people can find it.
Oh, sure, it's not going to be ready yet, once we confirm the questions, it's going to come in the utility billing is the idea, is your, your utility billing process. It will be posted on the city's website and then it will be promoted through the city's social media. We'll have hard copies available for individuals at City Hall in the Public Library preferably. And then, I can make a Word doc available on the website as well for people who may not have the best handwriting or have some, need some assistance with that. So, we can do it in a lot of different ways. So, that's what we're hoping to do and we'll put out a press release and contact the paper and Siskiyou Media Council if that's going out. Ideally, I think right now, we had deployment at the end of January, which is probably given to you more at the beginning of February and we'll have it open for at least a good month or so to give everybody a chance to look at that. And then, after about two weeks, the plan is to take a look at how many submissions we have. And if we happen to be really low, I'll let everybody on council know that we can each, if we're going to start pushing that, if we have really low turnout for that. So, I'm hopeful that people will take it. Usually, when you give people an opportunity to give their opinion, their, who would that? So, yeah, so we're going to be pushing that. All right.
There is one, there is one thing that's stuck in my mind as we walk through this. If you have two, a husband and wife.
Everybody can take it, yeah, you can take it separately, so you can do two submissions or you can do together.
Maybe what we should do then is have something that has two sides to it and one on either side. So, if there is a husband and wife, they turn one in, I don't know where, put two copies in, is all I'm saying, so if there's two people living there.
Yeah, we can try and give multiple copies.
No, she's saying, I was looking at her.
No.
We need to get it to the link folks Friday the 15th of the month, Friday, 15th of February for foreclosure and the March bill. And they just put one page, I mean, that's all they can do.
What we can do is we'll put, there'll be a little intro on there and then we can put something on there that if you need additional copies, either go to our website or visit City Hall. But that's a good, that's a good point, thank you.
Did you have a discussion?
Are there any other, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll now move into discussion.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to potentially entertain having the select five law enforcement and animal control as major concern this summer. It's a little separate from that, in those, married inclusion next to the others. And I would also like to potentially ask a question about that, if we could add one more. You know, generally speaking, are you in favor of raising, raising rates, taxes, or cutting services? Because it's fine if the community believes in cutting services, I'd agree with that. But I'd like to hear from them, given the opportunity to explain that directly.
I kind of feel a little bit of a shiver of dread when I hear that question.
Yeah.
It's the difficult question.
Well, what we can do, what we can do is add a question after the top part.
After you get them in.
And then, basically say generally, are you in favor of raising sales tax? Raising taxes.
Raising revenue or cutting services.
See, I would think that would happen, I would have, I mean, just in terms of how we're going to be communicating as a council with the community, if we start off by writing the very first thing saying, hey, we're thinking of raising taxes, that's automatically going to go that way. And I think that if we go the opposite way and simply ask them, what do you want to do? What's important to you, what's your priorities? And then, we come back afterwards and we study it and then we say, okay, we're going to go out to you and say, we studied it and this is the reason to raise taxes. And I just think if we spike anything in there right from the beginning, anything we're going to be doing is saying, oh, they're raising taxes again. And everything we're going to try and do to educate them and bring them along is going to be lost on us.
How about this?
I'd have, I ever, I haven't evaluated that, he's got to get it for you.
How about this? Do you favor a balanced budget with the city council?
Well, most people will probably say yes. But how about, you know, think of it the opposite way, what type of answers are you looking to get? Like, what type of information are you trying to get from people?
If you bring them in and educate them and then explain.
Councilmember R?
Well, in support of what the vice, vice mayor said, it was children's finance. And believe me, we spend hours on this now. The city of Dunsmere cut back on our sheriff's contract because of financial needs. We now spend less on the sheriff's department than we did. When I was mayor, we cut back a full deputy position 10 years ago. And I always worried for the community, do you feel less safe? More safe, less safe? I would like to hear for our service, our core services, public works, fire, and police, which is the sheriff's office. You give it a one, I don't like it, or a five, I feel good. I think that's some kind of immediate feedback you need.
I like that.
So.
So, some form of ranking.
Well, it would be a satisfaction matrix.
Satisfaction. And it wouldn't be the sheriff so much as crime, would it be, or safe, something like that?
I mean, again.
There's a whole engine of it, same thing with government enforcement.
And then, again, you're getting more into a very focused, specialized area, which is, which is health and safety. And so, again, you know, you have to go back to what's the overarching first step is we're trying to define the vision and we're trying to look at priorities we've been talking through. So, adding law enforcement and animal control is easy. You know, as we're getting more and more into the weeds, again, we're adding various specific survey questions that's off the original objective of first stage.
But for us in finance, what does the citizens want? Do they want a tax increase for services or do they want to cut back in services? This, to me, will help guide us in making those decisions.
Yeah, especially prior to this program coming to its fruition and perhaps the tax measure going toward people, we will need to develop and pass a budget. So, sometimes in terms of cutting service, raising revenue might be helpful at this point.
But I do see the point that government enthusiasm kind of is a nice thing to do first.
You do, you do want to make sure when they're putting together survey questions, you know, if you take a look at the language, it's very neutral and you try and say as neutral as possible and you don't necessarily want to create a question that's going to spin people into a negative space. But let me, they, basically, we would copy the second to last black bullet point. So, that says what services or products should the city of Dunsmere create and or improve in the next two years? We can create a reverse question, which is what services should the city of Dunsmere cut if faced with another year of budget deficits?
There you go, I like that.
I'll play with the language a little bit, I think that's going to be a better question. That's not going to spin people into a negative space as much. But we have to.
And I, this really sort of, again, I'm pushing in Finance Committee, let's not do for the next fiscal year what we did in the current fiscal year for community grant programs. Either we have money to give the library in the pool or we don't. But let's don't say we do and then we don't and second best the community. So, this is all going to be happening in the next two or three months. And again, whether it's the full council or the Finance Committee, where are we going to spend our precious general fund dollars?
Do we need to make a motion to move this along or is this just a report for updates?
Well, you know, I'd like to.
I'm happy to move.
I have one more question besides the vice mayor's.
Sure.
Would it be possible, I knew this would take a little more work and effort on the person doing that there, but could we rank it one through five, that would give us a lot more in depth.
That's what we were talking about.
No, right now, I have, please select only five, so you want them to rank all of them.
That would give us far more interesting data.
Yeah, you know, I thought about doing the ranking at the second, the second stage. Because it's a lot, it's a big list, I think that's what my concern is. But we can, we can turn it into, please rank, please rank the priorities from most important to least important.
One hundred and five, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. So, you'd rather, so is the council okay with ranking rather than picking five?
I prefer, we're all looking for guidance from the community, sure. Simple as that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The easiest way. But that's what we want, we want to put out there, what's going to make it easy for them to get us, so we can best succeed.
Yep.
But this is easier.
Well, we don't want to make them have like homework. You have a couple questions still out there to go.
So, we can go with what we got now, at this point.
So, there's a motion to approve the survey questions with the amended addition of services being one of the people, with the addition of law enforcement and control of priorities.
Correct.
And then, the addition of the question of what services and projects would you be willing to cut if faced with another bad budget year, I'm going to work on that language, but generally.
That's a good one, too.
Okay.
There is, there is one thing, though, that I noticed isn't on here and it's something that has kind of slipped under the rug and that's tree trimming. And, you know, we had to cut that out of solid waste. And so, now we're sitting in a situation where it's no longer in the budget, it would have to come out of the fund. So, if people want to have that as a priority, that should be something in there then, too.
Okay.
Tree trimming and.
I might roll that into green waste, so I might do green waste and tree trimming, so that's okay, okay. We're getting long, I got to fit this up one piece of paper.
You have a motion and a second, right?
All right, there's a motion, is there a second to move forward with this?
A second.
So, there's a second, any other discussion?
Thank you for doing this, it's an honor, Eric.
This is, I like this, this is fun. All those in favor of moving forward with the survey questions as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries, thank you. So, I will get on that ASAP. All right, we'll move into item number six, C, which is public works replacement of loader. And is it exactly how it sounds?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought it said leader when I first saw it, I said, who are we firing?
Oh, yeah. So, what's being asked of the city council is consider best options for replacing public works loader. It is, the loader's on its last legs and is not in compliance with CAR, which is the California Air. which is the California Air Quality Board standards. And so there are three choices. The first is Public Works is looking into a lease with an option to buy after four years, which is the most expensive in the long run.
Yeah.
Option number two is trading two trucks that are surplus towards the purchase of a new loader, which price to be determined of those trucks. Typically, it's just a blue book look up, isn't it, for the trucks, I think?
Sure, yeah, or use prices.
And then I, option number three is share a backhoe with the water department, which A, will not work as well in snow events. B, there may be conflicts, which we're gonna do two departments in emergencies. And C, FYI, the backhoe will also need to be replaced within five years. And then finally, number four, which is the recommendation is to share the backhoe until we see what next year's budget numbers look like. Are there any clarifying questions before we move into public comment, council member?
Is there a staff recommendation?
Yeah, that was number four. Share the backhoe until they take a look.
Are we still kind of cutting our, putting more wear and tear on that backhoe twice as we brought it back?
Well, one, one slight additional piece of information is that the current loader is allowed to be used, but it's at a limited restriction based off of that CARB. So we can use it for so many hours for the year.
So if we get rid of the other two trucks, how much do you think percentage wise would take care of the new loader?
That'll be something that Public Works Director will investigate thoroughly and come back with more detailed physical numbers.
Yeah, they'll have to.
We don't have the numbers right now.
They'll have to, yeah.
I'd be more entertained to do that one.
Well, I'm moving table to tell you another number.
Yeah, a new recommendation.
Question, and then we'll go to public comment. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Would anyone like to give a public comment on replacing a Public Works loader? Seeing none, we'll now move into discussion. Councilmember Ryan, would you like to make your motion again?
Yes, I move that we adopt the recommendation to share the backhoe until we see next year's numbers.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at the motion at hand?
Well, the council includes a direction from staff to bring us back numbers by two next year to see what we're looking at in terms of the units.
Councilmember Art?
Well, I'm going to either stay or vote no. Based on my experience on the city council, we had this exact same issue 10 years ago, the dump truck.
The dump, they have a vote here.
The dump truck. What we found out, I wish the treasurer was here, is that the California Air Resources Board continues to tighten diesel emission standards. So when we went out on the market, auctions, PG&E, everything we could think of, all of the Jeep trucks and loaders and diesel powered equipment is not California CARB compliant. So Jeep ones go to Nevada. And anyway, we sliced it, it was $300,000 to replace a dump truck that the employees said was dangerous to drive. It was unreliable. So I totally agree with the vice mayor. There's no numbers, there's no analysis. And getting back to the survey, are people gonna be happy without investing in this replacement equipment? Or are they willing to pay for the expense of this worn out mobile infrastructure? It's just like water and sewer. But I think we put our employees at risk. We put the reliability of city services at risk by just saying, let's do nothing and see what happens. So I hope we have an economic analysis of another couple of pieces of worn out infrastructure that need to be replaced and a staff recommendation based on their expertise. What makes the most sense for the people in Dunsmere?
All right, anyone, go ahead.
I mean, this could get into future agenda. Could we potentially hear from the head of Public Works on that?
It's all out of condition. Give all the equipment?
Yeah, I thought that was one time board. Didn't we come up with a depreciation? Didn't we want to look at depreciation in a general sense?
We do, we have an.
I had a fair time developing that.
Here's my motion.
Well, there's already a motion on the table.
And it's seconded, right?
You seconded.
I did, no, you motioned and you said. I, I, I haven't seconded. No, I, and, and Art's got a point. But he, I don't know if he's doing it right, so I'm gonna try this. Art, I made your motion. I'm motioning to be tabled this and to lighten some numbers and I'd have Bill here to talk to you. So that's my motion. The table will have to decide anything.
That's the exact motion.
No, he said, go ahead.
You want to share. Share puts more wear and tear on a piece of equipment, which is split. But with the obvious, that in the meantime, they're going to share with the backup.
That's part of where the tear part comes in.
Well, I think what we're saying is that if this motion were to pass after that, we can still follow through and get the analysis, come back and change it. All we're saying right now is we have to recognize we don't have money to buy anything tonight. So if we say we're gonna go with Plan Four, which is the motion of the second, that means that we can also say, come back with some depreciation, depreciation analysis of all of our Public Works and, and we can build off of that.
So we're gonna share to the next meeting, should we talk about it?
Yeah.
Let's share to the next meeting, I'll go with.
Yes, so that, that was.
Because I want to know the numbers.
My understanding is that was the original motion?
It was.
And it was seconded by councilmember Joey.
I just want to make sure that, because he's right.
And there's a request.
We had a bit in the butt and I was on council when it happened, so I don't want that to happen.
So, and there's a request for, so what I'm hearing is there's also a request of staff to also prepare a, an inventory of all of our vehicles and equipment with timelines on.
One we think that will get, you know, for.
Well, and also they would like to.
If the vice mayor would like to amend this motion, I will amend my second to say that that will be a part of the motion in general, that there will be analysis. And we're gonna have staff to have analysis of all equipment, well, of Public Works.
I guess we'll say this, lighten what happened for the next meeting, which was happened.
No, this could be like a month after.
Yeah, we need to know where we stand then.
But in the meantime, we're gonna do what reality is telling us.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right.
I'll go with the floor.
So there's a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of sharing the backhoe until we get additional information on depreciation and funding, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. I see. I knew you'd see here.
And councilmember Art is saying, motion carries. Now we'll move on to item number six D, which was to allow the sale of an alley dividing two jointly owned properties at 6254 Shear and 6258 Shear. And anybody who ever find that. Thank you. All right, so what's being asked of the council? Permission to sell an alleyway, part of it is a vacated street located between jointly owned parcels. Staff was contacted by a resident who owns two adjacent parcels that are separated by an alley. He inquired about the potential for purchasing the alley located between 6254 and 6258 Shear to create one contiguous parcel. An appraisal was done and it was determined that the property was worth less than $5,000. The owner of the adjacent parcel has agreed to pay the city $4,000 as well as the cost of surveying the parcel and preparing the purchasing agreement. Councilmember Ryan, you had pulled this item, so if you have any clarifying questions, you'd like to be.
Yeah, I just wanted to draw everyone's attention. I was looking at the backside of this page. You see the parcels?
Yeah.
With the alleyway? Yeah, and I recognized that parcel over by the river. And I clarified with staff that we do in fact own that river front of Shear. And this alleyway is the access to that. So I guess I just have a, I want everyone to be aware of the fact that that's part of the purpose of the alley. And I haven't been there specifically, so I don't know if there's any use or reason why we own that land in particular. But I just wanted to send out some viability of that land being affected by the absence of easement through there.
And either an option that we could do once we get to discussion is we could amend this to sell it with the intent of also providing an easement for access. But we would have to really determine what type of access. If it's just ingress, egress and maintenance. So I think that would be something we would probably want to send back to staff to get better clarification on if, if even the parcel owner would be interested in that.
I also, I'd like to send this back to the head. Anytime you have an alley, I look at it, it's that's where my fire trucks are going. So what is this gonna be as far as a fire impact? You know?
I believe it's an honorary to leave an alley.
It's not wide enough for a fire truck.
It's not wide enough for a fire truck. But it's wide enough for trucks to go to the emergency?
No.
I don't know where this is at, so.
Maybe we should.
So.
We're, we're, we're gonna have a public comment.
Yeah. Any other questions? Councilmember Art?
Well, I'm trying to understand the staff report. Is the staff recommendation to approve the sale of a parcel? Or is that just a suggesting motion someone can make?
There is a, there is no recommendation, it looks like. But the options are to either approve or reject the sale of a parcel. Obviously, there's other options as well.
Does the staff have a recommendation?
Recommend the sale.
Thank you. Better.
Question?
Got a question for Julie. Okay, Julie, this is two pieces of property?
There are two parcels that are owned by the same individual.
Okay.
With the alleyway that goes down between those parcels and also along with the.
So now at the end of the year, he's paying taxes. Is he still paying taxes on two, or is he trying to make a one?
Well, that's the whole thing. He may indeed combine them, the, the two parcels along with the alleyway for one parcel.
So that the city's losing money?
Not necessarily, because there's a home on each one. That would still be considered by the, by the tax assessor. I can't say I don't know how they do it, but it's not changing any except adding this small strip of land to one whole parcel.
If you're looking at just like a parcel for the assessments and stuff, it would be pretty minor loss if they do provide it to one.
Still lots?
It'd be very, very.
We've got kids in Dunsmere.
Do you know why we own?
We've got recital to kids.
Do you know why we own that river frontage lot?
No, there are several alleyways along Shear Avenue to the river that are not owned by anyone. It's a public access. This is the only one that's owned by the city, along with that sliver back there. I can't say for sure, but I would, I believe I have been told that that sliver is acknowledged as property by the parcels, the Shear Avenue parcels in front of it. So my understanding is if you were to walk down there, if you could find it, as you say, unimproved, if you could find it, probably that sliver of land is already improved by the owners of the parcels that connect to it. So it's not as though it's a beach or anything like that.
We will now open this up for public comment. I'm sorry. Harris, Hector?
So I have a question then. If there is an extra sliver, sliver of land that this alleyway goes to, why can't we sell that to them too? Is that something that we can sweeten the deal? And then we don't have to have access to the city owned land? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other general public comments related to the site of? Seeing none, we'll now move into discussion.
Do you think they hold?
Okay, there's a motion to table this item until we get more information.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what kind of information would you like?
Well, I'd like to, you know, have a six floor property there that we have. What's the use and all of that? I think that assuming that, that property is not something that we need to maintain some sort of access to, there's no reason then to dispute this taking place. I think that would be the only question in my mind.
Why is the city kept this all though? Do they, you know, monitor? No, or, I, I, personally, I'd like to table, like, go see it myself and analyze.
And then I know, councilmember Ryan, would you like information from staff as far as easement details?
I'm more likely to ease the details than most of that river frontage. If you were to sell it for maybe additional $5,000 or what its value might be.
I would say.
Should we break it off like that?
I, I would. I would say from a planning perspective, having riverfront property like that, whether it's improved or unimproved is an essential piece in case we do need to ever mitigate wetlands or stream bank. So for a, for a court permit with the Army Corps or for the stream bank alteration permits from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, if you have another piece of property somewhere else that isn't improved along the riverfront, you can actually mitigate some of that. So there is an advantage of, of sitting on a riverfront property like that because we could in the future improve it as part of another project.
Is there just a staff report on the use and value of the land?
Yeah, so we can do that.
That was like a discovery, Carol Show.
I know.
My God.
Good job.
Rock star. I just had to deal with this, so it's, it's one of those things. Councilmember Art, is there any other information that you'd like or other?
Yes, I would like, well, as I understand it, as of tonight, the staff recommendation is to approve the sale of a parcel. I would like to hear from our fire department and our Public Works Department if they support that. We sort of talked around easements, public safety, value to the city and its taxpayers. So.
Does that a bunch of you want to go look at it? The fire, I mean, he said a fire truck can't get down there. I agree with that, but we'd like to hear more.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
All right.
And I seconded it.
I got a list too as well. So there's a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into all, all those in favor of tableing this item until we receive, receive additional information from the state. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstention, motion carries. We have no other new business on this agenda item. We do not have a future agenda items on this, but I would encourage council members to send their list to me. We will have free agenda. We did have a free agenda already and we will have another opportunity for future agenda items at next week's February 6th meeting.
I'd like to remind the mayor, we talked about hail trans ribbon cutting.
Yes, thank you. I just talked to them yesterday.
Have you got a date on that?
No, we, we will get mine. So thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, I just think, what I'm looking for is a celebration of closure of the old Dunsmere Bridge project. They've come and briefed us before and went through the whole thing. And I just thought they could come in and we could have a cutting of a ribbon or some sort of celebration, thank you, close it down. That's what I was like.
They should bring food though.
Okay, yeah, we can. All right, I will reach out to them. But again, we will have future agenda items at next week's February 6th meeting, which I will not be at. Councilmember Ryan, you will be taking the helm for that. So, all right, all those in favor of adjournment, please sign them.
Wait, wait, ma'am, ma'am.
Yes?
Couple things before we adjourn them. I'd like to put out there that Mom, I mean, Ms. Julie Iska, she's retiring.